Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Whitehall City Council Meeting of December 15th, 2020. I'd like to start with a moment's silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, Ms. Ogden, would you please call a roll?
Coniston.
Present.
Cantor.
Present.
Peck.
Present.
Morrison.
Present.
Bailey.
Rodriguez.
Present.
Elmore.
Present.
President. Present. At this time, I now accept a motion to excuse the absent member.
Oh, that was me. Okay, yes, Mr. President, I'd like to excuse the absent member.
Thank you.
Second. Thank you. There's been a motion by Mr. Rodriguez, seconded by Mr. Cantor, to excuse the absent member. Ms. Ogden, please call a roll.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Peck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
The absent member has been excused. At this time, I would accept a motion for the approval of minutes for the December 1st, I'm sorry, for the December 1st, 2020 Agenda and regular meeting minutes and the November 18th Parks Recreation Committee meeting minutes.
Well, I know my part. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second. There's been a motion by Ms. Coniston, seconded by Mr. Cantor, the approval of minutes. Ms. Ogden, please call a roll.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Peck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
The minutes have been approved. At this time, it's our first poll public of the evening, and I've been informed by council clerk that no letters were submitted to the office yesterday by 5:00 PM. So we'll move into our standing committee reports. Administration and Financial Management, Chairperson Bailey, Mr. Rodriguez, would you please?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. Administration and Financial Management met last Tuesday, minutes are on file, there's a whole bunch of things on the agenda this evening. We will meet briefly next week, sometime after 6:30.
Thank you. Community and Elder Advocacy, Chairperson Elmore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Community and Elder Advocacy met last week. We have no drafts or pending legislation. Our minutes are on file and we'll meet again on Tuesday.
Thank you. Community Standards Enforcement, Chairperson Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Community Standards Enforcement met last Tuesday, minutes are on file, there's nothing on the agenda, we'll meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
Thank you. Economic Development, Chairperson Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Economic Development also met last Tuesday, our minutes are on file, we'll meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
Very good. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services, Chairperson Heck.
Thank you, Mr. President. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services met last Tuesday, we have six pieces of legislation tonight, and we will meet next Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
Great. Public Safety, Chairperson Coniston.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Safety met last week, our minutes are on file, and we'll meet again on Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
Very good. And Parks and Recreation, Chairperson Cantor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Parks and Recreation met last week, our minutes are on file, we'll meet again next week sometime after 6:30.
Last committee of the year. So it is. Very good. We'll now move on to the official reports. Mayor Ken Maggard.
The only report that I have this evening, well, I have two things, never mind, is that I ask for approval of all the legislation in this package. Thank you for your consideration. And next week, I will be bringing to council legislation adopting the IA F-2-year contract, and you should get copies of that probably Thursday or early Friday for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney Michael Bevis is not with us this evening, City Auditor Dan Miller is not with us this evening, Director of Development and Public Service Zach Woodruff is not with us this evening, Director of Public Safety Van Greg is not with us this evening, and Treasurer Steve Quinsell is also not with us this evening. The following official reports have been filed in the council office since last meeting: the auditor's expense report for November 2020, the auditor's bank report for November 2020, the auditor's statement of cash position report for November 2020, and the auditor's revenue report for November 2020. Under Communications, Position, and Claims, we have got no communications, petitions, or claims that were filed in the council office since our last meeting. At this time, I'd like to please ask Ms. Ogden if she would take a roll as to whether each member of council was given a copy of each item of legislation listed on the agenda prior to the meeting and including any add-on legislation.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Peck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Thank you. We will now go into third reading, Ordinance 982020, making appropriation for current general fund 101 expenses, Street 201 expenses, and State Highway Materials 211 expenses during the period from January 1st, 2021 to December 31st, 2021, in the total sum of $35,683,861, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce Ordinance 982020 and move for the adoption.
Second. Entered Ordinance 982020 has been introduced by Mr. Morrison, seconded by Mr. Rodriguez. For approval, is there any discussion on the motion? Ms. Ogden, please call a roll.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Peck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Ordinance 982020 has been adopted. Ordinance 992020, amending 161.38 of the codified ordinances of the City of Whitehall, Ohio, titled salary schedule and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance 992020 and move for its adoption.
Second. Ordinance 992020 has been introduced by Mr. Rodriguez, seconded by Mr. Morrison for its adoption. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Ogden, please call a roll.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Peck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Ordinance 992020 has been adopted. Ordinance 12020, amending the table of authorized personnel 161.37J, Department of Economic and Community Development, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce Ordinance 12020 and move for the adoption.
Second.
Mr. Morrison has introduced with the second of Ms. Elmore, Ordinance 12020, and moved for the adoption. Is there any discussion on the motion? Ms. Ogden, please call a roll.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Peck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Ordinance 12020 has been adopted. Ordinance 1012020, amending 161.17I, sick leave with plague, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance 1012020 and move for its adoption.
Oh, second.
Ordinance 1012020 has been introduced by Mr. Rodriguez, seconded by Ms. Heck, and for the move, consideration for adoption, any discussion? Ms. Ogden, please call a roll.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Peck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Ordinance 1012020 has been adopted. Ordinance 1092020, authorizing approving a fund transfer from unappropriated monies in the General Fund 101 to the Capital Improvement Project Fund 311 in the amount of $1,100,000, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance 1092020 and move for its adoption.
Second. Ordinance 1092020 has been introduced by Mr. Rodriguez, seconded by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Ogden, please call a roll.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Peck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore. Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 1092020 has been adopted. Ordinance 1102020, authorizing approving a fund transfer in amount of $75,000 from unappropriated monies in the General Fund 101, the Community Development Trust Fund 550.
Mr. President, I wish to move for the introduction of Ordinance 1102020 and move for the adoption.
Second. Ordinance 101, 1102020 has been introduced by Mr. Morrison, seconded by Mr. Rodriguez for adoption. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Ogden, please call a roll.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Peck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Ordinance 1102020 has been adopted. Ordinance 1112020, authorizing approving a fund transfer in amount of $125,000 from the General Fund 101 to the Street Maintenance and Repair Fund 201.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance 1112020 and move for its adoption.
Second.
Ordinance 1112020 has been introduced by Mr. Rodriguez, seconded by Ms. Heck, and motion for the adoption, any discussion? Ms. Ogden, please call a roll.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Peck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Ordinance 1112020 has been adopted. Ordinance 1122020, amending 135.16C1, titled Capital Improvement and Project Fund.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce Ordinance 1122020 and move for the adoption.
Second. Mr. Morrison, with a second of Mr. Rodriguez, has introduced Ordinance 1122020 and requested its adoption. Any discussion? Ms. Ogden, please call a roll.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Peck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Ordinance 1122020 has been adopted. Ordinance 1132020, amending 135.18B, titled Fleet Reserve and Maintenance Fund, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce Ordinance 1132020 and move for the adoption.
Second. Ordinance 1132020 has been introduced by Mr. Morrison, seconded by Mr. Rodriguez, with a request for approval. Any discussion? Ms. Ogden, please call a roll.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Peck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Ordinance 1132020 has been adopted. Ordinance 1142020, amending 135.21B1, Water and Sewer Mandate Improvement Reserve Fund, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce Ordinance 1142020 and move for the adoption.
Second. Ordinance 1142020 has been introduced by Mr. Morrison, seconded by Mr. Rodriguez, with the request for adoption. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Ogden, please call a roll.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Peck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Ordinance 1142020 has been adopted. Ordinance 1152020, making appropriation for certain special revenue, internal service, and fiduciary accounts for the calendar year 2021, in the total sum of $11,453,378.34, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance 1152020 and move for its adoption.
Second.
Ordinance 1152020 has been introduced by Mr. Rodriguez, seconded by Ms. Heck, with the request for approval. Any discussion? Ms. Ogden, please call a roll.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Peck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Ordinance 1152020 has been adopted. That brings us to our second readings, which we have got no legislation this evening. Second. And now into first reading, Ordinance 1242020, approving and making a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $26,000 from unappropriate monies in the Flexible Spending Fund 820 to the Flexible Spending Expense Account 820.000.50,000, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance 1242020 and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second. Ordinance 1242020 has been introduced by Mr. Rodriguez, seconded by Mr. Morrison, requesting suspension of all rules. Any discussion? Ms. Ogden, please call a roll.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Peck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second. Motion to adopt by Mr. Rodriguez, seconded by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? Ms. Ogden, please call a roll.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Peck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Ordinance 1242020 has been adopted. Ordinance 125, authorizing the creation of the Refuse Collection Bin's Expense Account 101.600.54,000, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance 1252020 and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second. Ordinance 1252020 has been introduced by Mr. Rodriguez, seconded by Mr. Cantor, and with the request to suspend all rules. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? Ms. Ogden, please call a roll.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Peck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second. The motion to adopt, Ordinance 1252020, was brought forth by Mr. Rodriguez, seconded by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? Ms. Ogden, please call a roll.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Peck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Ordinance 1252020 has been adopted. Ordinance 1262020, authorizing the creation of the Evidence Sentified Side Fund 245, making a fund transfer of $100,000 from unappropriate monies in the Law Enforcement Trust Fund 241 to the Evidence Sentified Side Fund 245, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance 1262020 and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second. Ordinance 1262020 has been introduced by Ms. Coniston, seconded by Mr. Cantor, with the request to suspend all rules. Any discussion? Ms. Ogden.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Peck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt.
Second. Motion to adopt by Ms. Coniston, seconded by Mr. Cantor. Any discussion? Ms. Ogden, please call a roll.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Peck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Ordinance 1262020 has been adopted. Ordinance 1272020, approving and making a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $82,314.88 from unappropriate monies in the CARES Act Grant Fund 205 to the CARES Act Grant Fund, Grant Expense Account 205.000.50,000, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance 1272020 and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second. Ordinance 1272020 has been introduced by Mr. Rodriguez, seconded by Mr. Cantor, with the motion to suspend all rules. Any discussion? Ms. Ogden.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Peck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second. A motion to adopt by Mr. Rodriguez, seconded by Mr. Cantor. Any discussion? Ms. Ogden, please call a roll.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Peck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Ordinance 1272020 has been adopted. Ordinance 1282020, authorizing the creation of the OPWC Improvement Fund 322, appropriating $120,000 from unappropriate monies in the OPWC Improvement Fund 322 to the Poth Road Expense Account 322.000.50,000, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I would like to introduce Ordinance Number 1282020 and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second. Ordinance 1282020 has been introduced by Ms. Heck, seconded by Mr. Cantor, requesting the suspension of all rules. Any discussion? Ms. Ogden, please call a roll.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Peck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt.
Second. Motion to adopt by Ms. Heck, seconded by Mr. Cantor. Any discussion? Ms. Ogden, please call a roll.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Peck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Ordinance 1282020 has been adopted. Resolution 452020, resolving to approve then announce certificates and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce Resolution 452020 and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second. Resolution 452020 has been introduced by Mr. Morrison, seconded by Mr. Rodriguez, with the request to suspend all rules. Any discussion? Ms. Ogden, please call a roll.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Peck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt.
Second. Motion to adopt by Mr. Morrison, seconded by Mr. Rodriguez. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Ogden, please call a roll.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Peck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Resolution 452020 has been adopted. Resolution 462020, authorizing the mayor to participate in the Ohio Department of Transportation's ODOTs, project to replace the bridge structures on Ettna Street and Elburn Avenue, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I would like to introduce Resolution 462020 and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second. Ms. Heck has introduced Resolution 462020 with the request to suspend all rules, seconded by Mr. Cantor. Any discussion? Ms. Ogden, please call a roll.
Coniston. Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt?
Second. A motion to adopt by Ms. Heck, second by Mr. Cantor, any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call rule.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Resolution 46, 2020 has been adopted. Resolution 47, 2020, levying special assessments for property maintenance at several locations in the city of Whitehall, Ohio, addresses and parcel numbers as provided within the text of this resolution, certifying such costs to the Franklin County Auditor to be assessed against such property and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I would like to introduce Resolution Number 47, 2020, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second. Thank you. Resolution 47, 2020 has been introduced by Ms. Heck, second by Ms. Elmore, with the request to suspend all rules, any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call rule.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Resolution 14, or, oh, I'm sorry, so, has been adopted. Or no, I might have hit it myself. No, I'm sorry. The rules have been suspended. Thank you.
Mr. President, I would like to move to adopt.
Second. Now we have the motion to adopt by Ms. Heck, second by Ms. Elmore, any discussion? Please call rule.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Resolution 47, 2020 has been adopted. Resolution 48, 2020, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with safe built for plan review and inspection services and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I would like to introduce Resolution Number 48, 2020, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second. Resolution 48, 2020 has been introduced with the request to suspend all rules by Ms. Heck, second by Ms. Morrison, Mr. Morrison, excuse me, any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call rule.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt?
Second. Motion to adopt by Ms. Heck, second by Mr. Morrison, any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call rule.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Resolution 48, 2020 has been adopted. Resolution 49, 2020, authorizing the mayor to apply for and accept funds through Franklin County's Infrastructure Bank Program and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I would like to introduce Resolution Number 49, 2020, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second. Thank you. Resolution 49, 2020 has been introduced by Ms. Heck, second by Mr. Rodriguez, with the request to suspend all rules, any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call rule.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt?
Second. Motion to adopt by Ms. Heck, second by Mr. Rodriguez, any question, hearing of discussion? Four questions. Hearing none, Ms. Aug, please call rule.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Resolution 49, 2020 has been adopted. Resolution 50, 2020, recognizing Sherri Phillips as the 2020 Administrative Employee of the Year and awarding her a one-time $300, $350 as additional compensation and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Resolution 50, 2020, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second. Resolution 50, 2020 has been introduced by Mr. Rodriguez, second by Mr. Morrison, and also requesting suspension of rules, any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call rule.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt?
Second. Motion to adopt by Mr. Rodriguez, second by Mr. Morrison, any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call rule.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Resolution 50, 2020 has been adopted. Now the mayor is going to read the resolution in its entirety.
Recognizing Sherri Phillips as the 2020 Administrative Employee of the Year and awarding her a one-time payment of $350 as additional compensation and declaring an emergency. Whereas, it is the desire of this council and administration to annually recognize and honor city employees who have performed their duties faithfully and in a consistent, persistent, and outstanding manner. And whereas Sherri Phillips has trained all staff on scheduling software, modernized the invoicing process, and has managed to save the city more than $100,000. She has updated the Division Retirement and Ceremonial Programs and helped other departments with similar preparation, assisted in improving efficiency in the Division of Police. I would also like to add that when she went on vacation and was sitting on the beach, she had a laptop with her in order to help the payroll administrator at that time with the new program. It's not in there, but I just wanted to, to let them know how dedicated Sherri is. Therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Whitehall, Ohio, that the Council and Administration of the City of Whitehall hereby recognizes and honors Sherri Phillips as Administrative Employee of the Year and expresses our appreciation to her for her service. And that Sherri Phillips will be and hereby is authorized to receive, in addition to her usual compensation, a payment of $350 from the Contingency Expense Account in recognition of this honor. And that the city auditor is hereby recognized draws warrant upon the treasurer for these funds for the purpose stated in this resolution. And that the clerk of this council is hereby directed to provide certified copies of this resolution to the auditor, the treasurer, human resources, and to Sherri Phillips. And that this resolution is hereby declared to be an emergency measure immediately necessary for the preservation of the public health, peace, safety, and welfare. And for the further reason, that this is a 2020 honor and all employees of the year should be compensated in a timely manner for this honor. Wherefore, this resolution shall go into full force and effect immediately upon its passage and approval by the mayor. And I think we should give Sherri Phillips a round of applause.
You trained her well on that laptop on the beach. I remember somebody else doing that, too.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, we've got Resolution 51, 2020, recognizing Greg McQuestion as the 2020 Firefighter of the Year and awarding him a one-time payment of $350 as additional compensation and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Resolution 51, 2020, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second. Resolution 51, 2020 has been introduced by Ms. Coniston, second by Mr. Cantor, with the request to suspend all rules, any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call rule.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt?
Second. A motion to adopt by Ms. Coniston, second by Mr. Cantor, any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call rule.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Resolution 51, 2020 has been adopted. Once again, we turn to the mayor to read the resolution in its entirety.
Recognizing Greg McQuestion as the 2020 Firefighter of the Year and awarding him a one-time payment of $350 as additional compensation and declaring an emergency. Whereas, it is the desire of this council and administration to annually recognize and honor city employees who have performed their duties faithfully and in a consistent, persistent, and outstanding manner. And whereas Greg McQuestion is an accomplished pump operator for the Division of Fire and consistently outperforms his peer group in this highly important and stressful position. In addition, firefighter McQuestion demonstrates informal leadership and a senior man in talenty when interacting with peers on his crew. He is always willing to help others and do whatever is necessary to accomplish the goals and mission of the division. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Whitehall, Ohio, that this council and administration of the City of Whitehall hereby recognizes and honors Greg McQuestion, Firefighter of the Year, and expresses our appreciation to him for his service. That Greg McQuestion will be and hereby is authorized to receive, in addition to his usual compensation, a payment of $350 from the Contingency Expense Account in recognition of this honor. And that the city auditor is hereby authorized to draw his warrant upon the treasurer for these funds for the purpose stated in this ordinance. And that the clerk of this council is hereby directed to provide certified copies of this resolution to the auditor, treasurer, human resources, and Greg McQuestion. And that this resolution is hereby declared to be an emergency measure immediately necessary for the preservation of the public health, peace, safety, and welfare. And for the further reason, that this is a 2020 honor and all employees of the year should be compensated in a timely manner for this honor. And wherefore, this resolution should go into full force and effect immediately upon its passage and approval by the mayor. Thank you so much, Greg, for your asking.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 52, 2020, recognizing Blake Allen as the 2020 Labor Service Employee of the Year and awarding him a one-time payment of $350 as additional compensation and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I would like to introduce Resolution Number 52, 2020, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second. Resolution 52, 2020 has been introduced by Ms. Heck, second by Mr. Cantor, with the request to suspend all rules, any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call rule.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt?
Second. A motion to adopt by Ms. Heck, second by Mr. Cantor, any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call rule.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Resolution 52, 2020 has been adopted. Once again, call on the mayor to come to the lectern to read the resolution in its entirety.
Recognizing Blake Allen as the 2020 Labor and Service Employee of the Year and awarding him a one-time payment of $350 as additional compensation and declaring an emergency. Whereas, it is the desire of this council and administration to annually recognize and honor city employees who have performed their duties faithfully and in a consistent, persistent, and outstanding manner. And whereas Blake Allen has helped in all aspects of the garage, including the sign replacement program, the hydrant and storm repair, building projects, street sweeping, and electrical work with the streetlights. Blake is always willing to do what's asked of him and offers new ideas when it comes to processes and jobs. And now therefore, be it resolved by this council of the City of Whitehall, Ohio, that the council and administration of the City of Whitehall hereby recognizes and honors Blake Allen as Labor and Service Employee of the Year and expresses our appreciation to him for his service. And that Blake Allen will be and hereby is authorized to receive, in addition to his usual compensation, a payment of $350 from the Contingency Expense Account in recognition of this honor. And that the city auditor is hereby recognized to draw his warrant upon the treasurer for the funds for the purpose stated in this resolution. And that the clerk of this council is hereby directed to provide certified copies of this resolution to the auditor, treasurer, human resources, and to Blake Allen. And that this resolution is hereby declared to be an emergency measure immediately necessary for the preservation of the public health, peace, safety, and welfare. For the further reason, this is a 2020 honor and all employees of the year should be compensated in a timely manner for this honor. Wherefore, this resolution should go into full force and effect immediately on its passage and approval by the mayor. And I would just like to say, and everybody should say, congratulations to Blake Allen.
Once again, thank you, Mayor. And following this evening, we have Resolution 53, 2020, recognizing Detective John Dickey as the 2020 Police Officer of the Year and awarding him a one-time payment of $350 as additional compensation and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Resolution 53, 2020, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second. Resolution 53, 2020 has been introduced by Ms. Coniston, second by Mr. Cantor, with the request to suspend all rules, any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call rule.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt?
Second. Motion to adopt by Ms. Coniston, second by Mr. Cantor, any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call rule.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Resolution 53, 2020 has been adopted. And if I may prevail upon the mayor one last time, to please come to the podium and read the resolution in its entirety.
I'll be happy to do so. Recognizing Detective John Dickey as the 2020 Police Officer of the Year and awarding him a one-time payment of $350 as additional compensation and declaring an emergency. Whereas, it is the desire of this council and administration to annually recognize and honor city employees who have performed their duties faithfully and in a consistent, persistent, and outstanding manner. And whereas, John Dickey is a Navy veteran and has been a member of the Whitehall Police Department for 22 years and currently investigates homicides, rapes, and major life crimes. Recently, he solved a 20-year-old cold case crime by working with multiple agencies in and out of Ohio, as well as the victim. In 2020, he was the first on the scene of a homicide and provided first aid, then assistance in apprehending the suspect. Afterward, he interviewed the suspect and obtained a confession. Detective Dickey also provides active shooter training to local Whitehall churches. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Whitehall, Ohio, that the Council and Administration of the City of Whitehall hereby recognizes and honors Detective John Dickey as Police Officer of the Year and expresses our appreciation to him for his service. And that John Dickey will be and hereby is authorized to receive, in addition to his usual compensation, a payment of $350 from the Contingency Expense Account in recognition of this honor. And that the city auditor is hereby authorized to draw his warrant upon the treasurer for these funds for the purpose stated in this ordinance. Resolution, sorry, that the clerk of this council is hereby directed to provide certified copies of this resolution to the auditor, treasurer, human resources, and to John Dickey. That this resolution is hereby declared to be an emergency measure immediately necessary for the preservation of the public health, peace, safety, and welfare. And for the further reason, this is a 2020 honor and all employees of the year should be compensated in a timely manner for this honor. Wherefore, this resolution should go into full force and effect immediately upon its passage and approval by the mayor. Thank you so much, Detective Dickey, for your hard work and your dedication to your position. Thank you.
Again, thank you, Mayor. Certainly appreciate you coming forward and reading those. That is it for this legislation from us this evening, which now brings us to our second poll public of the evening. And once again, we have gotten no letters that were turned into council office. So I'll now turn it to the community debate board.
I have stuff.
Then look at you.
And you know what? I completely had forgotten about this, and I apologize to the community. The WCCA will be around on Thursday. And yes, that's two days from today. And we will be judging the house lights. So make sure your inflatables are up, make sure your lights are up, make sure that everything is visible and looking good. And we will be giving out some awards afterwards. And then I have it on good authority, because we received a phone call from the North Pole, that Santa Claus is coming to Whitehall this Saturday. Yes. So we're all excited. We can't wait. We will be, WCCA will be driving Santa around the city of Whitehall. And we will make sure that we have our speakers up and that everybody will hear us coming, because we will be making a lot of noise and having a lot of fun. So that'll be between 12 and 5 on Saturday.
Santa's gonna be quite busy, isn't he?
Santa's gonna be quite busy.
That's great.
Thank you for your direct line to Santa.
Yes, absolutely.
We need him more, now more than ever.
Yes, we do.
Does anybody have anything else for the committee debate board?
It's just a reminder that the schools are providing meals. You can check out the school's website or their Facebook page for the times for all the different schools. And they also give you breakfast for the next day.
Oh, sure.
Nice.
They'll only be doing it while schools open, so over break they are not providing meals, but just when school is open.
Thank you, Joanna. At this time, I would like to poll council. Ms. Coniston?
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody, for viewing. Congratulations to all the recipients of the Employees of the Year. This is usually our very favorite day, because everybody usually likes to come in here and we get to celebrate you all. And hopefully you know how much we appreciate everything that you do for the city and for the community. We so appreciate you. I've got my Hanukkah vest on tonight. It's the sixth night of Hanukkah. Happy Hanukkah to those that celebrate. Merry Christmas for those that celebrate as well. And that's coming up. And it's a joyous time of the year. And again, let us not forget, this is a moment in time. Next year will be better. It's, it can only get better from here.
Well put. Mr. Cantor?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank everybody for watching. I want to piggyback what Councilwoman Coniston just said for the Employees of the Year. Very, very well deserved, and thank you for all you do on that. It's nice that Santa's gonna be here this week. We can all use a little bit of joy right now. I can't wait to see him come by. I'll have my daughters out there, and my granddaughters as well. So I thank everybody, wish everybody a happy Hanukkah, a Merry Christmas, and come on 2021.
Thank you. Ms. Heck?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will, although what previous council members have said. Thank you for everybody walking at home. Congratulations, and thank you to the employees that received the 2020 Employee of the Year award. I am excited to see Santa as well. I'll have my good time watching. And I just hope everybody has a wonderful holiday season that is upcoming on us.